The final workshop anyways on some of the main organics smell issues that we've been discussing with council, you know, over at least most of my tenure here. And just before I hand it off to Robert, our code enforcement officer, who's going to go through a PowerPoint presentation that kind of outlines a bit of the history of where we've been on this issue, some of the previous council discussions and workshops, and kind of what we've gone through so far. And then this workshop is really geared towards what additional options the city council may have to kind of further mitigate this issue going forward. So, and just a big thanks to Robert and Matt, who wanted to join us tonight, but he's very under the weather. He still very graciously did a PowerPoint preview along with Robert. So, we were able to have a little back and forth, and hopefully I can answer some of the questions that he's aware of. But with that, I will send it to Robert for the presentation.
All right. Well, good evening. I'm Robert Grant, the code enforcement officer. We're going to start with the agenda for tonight. I'm just going to give you a little bit of the recent background, the last six months or so. And then there's rundown some of the recent complaints. And then we're going to discuss the three basic options that we have for how to go forward with this. Those are, we leave it as is, the status quo, which I'm sure we're not, no one's really that excited about. Reach out to the operator of Maine Organics to see if they're willing to amend the consent agreement that we have to give us more favorable terms on enforcement. Or the third option is to make changes to the ordinances and allow myself and the code enforcement office to have other avenues of enforcement outside of the very specific odor ordinance that is mentioned in the consent agreement. The recent history is that in June and July, right after Lori retired, I discovered that she put in, she set aside the money for our imbutinol testing kits, but she never actually got around to ordering them. And I was unaware of that. So, the month or so after she left, I realized that, and I began, this is a long saga of trying to acquire these testing kits. It's been unsuccessful. And then in August, middle, in the middle of August, I asked the DEP to look into some leachate concerns that I had. The packet of their report that you've seen before is in the packet I gave to all of you, where they prescribed some ways to fix that issue. And the, after, I can go into the aftermath of what happened after that report happened and what took place in a minute. And then in October of 2024, we held the first workshop, or no, the second workshop, I'm sorry, with the DEP on how they approached the issue of odor created from compost facilities in general, not necessarily Maine Organics. And to try to learn how, or what methods they use to ensure that no smell leaves those composting facilities. This is the timeline of that leachate report and what happened afterward. Like I said, in, on August 14th, I contacted the DEP about my concerns with leachate, which is for, if I could back up a little bit, I guess leachate is very small particulates of that compost that come out of the piles when they get wet in particular. So, like after a big rainstorm, I would notice that Maine Organics was particularly smelly. And I kind of anecdotally realized that their leachate was coming out of the piles and causing the smell. So, I contacted the DEP, and two days later, they went and did an investigation and found that I was correct, that that was, that was a source of a lot of the smell this summer was, we had a lot of, when we'd have rain, the leachate would come out of the piles and cause that really serious odor issue that we had. So, on the 19th of August, we got that report detailing some of the corrective actions. That included, they wanted them to, the DEP wanted Maine Organics to put up a berm to stop the leachate from getting into their stormwater system, which is basically a ditch and a filtration system at the end of the ditch. And also to dredge out the top layer of material out of the ditch that would have been mostly, have been mostly leachate and replace it, which they did. And there, some of the, also in the packet, I have my list of complaints. And some of the complaints in there are from the, when they were dredging the stormwater system. So, I gave them some grace on that one when they were smelly that day, because we knew they were going to be smelly that day. They were trying to fix the problem. And then I have since August reported more concerns to the DEP about ongoing issues at Maine Organics, and the DEP hasn't had taken any action on my concerns. So, there, I can get into that later, too, if we'd like. So, they, the, since that, we did that workshop in October with the DEP, they've kind of more or less told Maine Organics that they're not in any sort of violation. And Maine Organics has kind of been full steam ahead on doing whatever they want. This photo that I'm sharing is of that berm that they were told to put up for the, to stop the leachate. I'm sitting in my, in the code car, and I took this photo out of the driver's side window on, well, we have the passenger side window of the car would be their stormwater drain. As you can see, they breached their berm because it collected too much water, and they're letting it go into the, into the, into the stormwater system like the DEP told them not to. And when I showed the DEP this, the DEP just kind of shrugged, verbally shrugged at me. Oh, well, we don't know what to do. So, that was one of the concerns, just an example of one of the stuff that was going on that hasn't had really had any remedy since. Now to get into my other major issue with the consent agreement. In the consent agreement, there is, I'm directed to use an imbutinol test kit for odor intensity to figure out when they have a violation, or when I believe they have a violation, if it actually is a violation. I have been unable to get this test kit through, I think, no fault of my own. I have, there's a series of emails in your packet where I've tried to contact the only company in the state that sells the kit. And one person in particular at the company doesn't want to let me have the kit for some reason. Every time I get to him in the steps, he disappears. So, I even went to somebody above him, and that guy just kicked me back down to the guy that won't sell me the kit, for whatever reason. But the timeline will show you, like in July, I reached out after I realized that we didn't, that Lori had never ordered the kit. I reached out the first time, tried to get it. He never got back to me until the 29th of July. And then he was supposed to follow up with me, never did. And I reached out in October. And no response. So, I went to the guy, I went to his superior, his boss, in December, and thought I was getting somewhere. December 18th, the representative that I was speaking to, which was the first guy I was speaking to in July, agreed to let me purchase the test kits and receive the training on the week of, the 13th of January. He went on vacation at the end of December and told me he'd be back the 6th of January. I reached out on the 9th and the 14th, and he never responded to me. And those emails are in your packet. So, that, that's been an ongoing issue. If you recall, Tabitha won't recall, because she wasn't on the council yet, but on, in our last workshop, I made mention of that they had a, they had a possible violation and what I considered a violation. I couldn't enforce that because I didn't have the imbutinol test kit. I still sent them a letter of, a notice of violation, and they asked me if I had the, if I had the test kit, and I said, no. And they said, well, we're not going to pay a fine, because we don't have, you can't prove that it was that smelly, even though. I'll be honest, I have one of the least sensitive noses you'll ever come across, and even I thought it was pretty bad that day. And it was ongoing. It went on for a couple of days with no resolution. So, without that imbutinol kit, I can't do anything effectively. And Maine Organics is now aware of that, that I can't get it. And the DEP even has trouble getting them. So, if the DEP has trouble getting these kits, how am I going to have much luck, apparently? I'm not.
Can you get them, like, does it have to be through the state of Maine, or can you go outside?
I asked, well, part, I think it's in the packet, but part of the process was, I asked the DEP who they get their kits from. And they put me into contact with the gentleman who refuses to return my emails. So, and then I asked them for somebody else to talk to and got his boss, and then he just kicked me back down to the guy in Belfast that won't answer my emails. But they're the only place in Maine that sells them, as far as I know. And you need to have the, have the test mean anything, have the kits be valid in court, basically, you have to be certified on how to use them. And the people that sell them certify you on how to use them. And he's the only guy that, this is the only company that does it in Maine.
Do you have to be certified in the state of Maine, or can you go to another state?
I'm sure, I'm sure we could either fly me out or fly somebody in, but I hadn't gotten to that point yet. That was my next course of action, but I wanted to wait, since it was two weeks from this, this workshop before I pursued broader action on that, if that's what you guys choose to do. So, yeah, it's, it's been a long infuriating saga to get, to try to get that kit. And then I thought I had them coming. I had, I asked Jim McClain, our facilities manager, to be another surrogate nose in case the entire code office was down with the flu or something. And I was going to get a couple of guys from the highway department as well to be certified to, so that it wasn't just them coming to certify three of us. We'd have six or seven people in the city.
That's great.
So, you know, be able to use it in a pinch if we needed to. Or say I was out of town on a training exercise or something for, you know, with the state, and there was a big, a big smell incident, somebody could go beat my dancing knee, which is allowed by the consent agreement. However, I can't get the test, so it's all a point.
Hey, Robert?
Yeah.
This is, this is Patrick. Question for you, the, in the packet, there's the October 28th notice of violation.
Yes, that.
Now, you're saying they didn't, they just said, too bad, we're not going to do anything?
Correct. When I, I had that, the notice of violation prepared by the city attorney, and then mailed it to Mr. Wellman, the owner of Maine Organics. And he responded via email and asked me if I had the imbutinol test kit, and I told him, no. And he said, well, then I don't see how there's a violation. So.
How would you describe his cooperation with you?
He's, he's been mostly cooperative, and until I actually decided that he had a violation, even though I didn't have the test kit, I said, there's, basically, I came to the determination that there's no, no other way you can say this wasn't a violation. It went on for several days. It was very smelly. Even without an imbutinol kit, it was, it was clearly a violation. And he, at that point, he became less cooperative. Trying to choose my words carefully.
Okay. And how would you describe, have you interacted with him much since that, since October?
On a few occasions, always in email. I guess I could have put him in the packet, but I didn't, I didn't know how deeply we wanted to get into these weeds. But he's been less, less friendly since the violation, but not antagonistic by any means.
Has he said he's going to do anything additionally to mitigate the smell?
I haven't, I haven't gotten to that point with him. He's, he's been working with the DEP, and more or less, the DEP has told him, he's, he's doing nothing that he shouldn't be, and that the smell's not an issue. And he's kind of taken that as a, I don't have to do anything. It's from, that's a, I'm inferring that from what I've, when I've talked to him. He basically said to me that he doesn't think that they need to do anything.
And you've talked to DEP, and they've said the same thing, he's in compliance?
Yeah, and that's, that's more or less what they told us at that last workshop as well, is that we measure smell in the matter of hours, and the DEP needs smell measured in days at an intensity, at a high intensity before they will even act. So, they, the, the scale is different. We're, we're on a scale of, you know, hours and day, hours, they're on a scale of days. So, the, the DEP doesn't think that the, our concerns rise to the level of a violation at their level.
Even that October multi-day event?
Yeah, I don't know that, they didn't get anybody on site in time. It lasted, it was a Friday. It started in the Friday morning. It was really bad on, on the industrial road. It lasted all day. It was still ongoing after the attendant that works at Maine Organics had gone home, and it was still going on Saturday, and it was gone sometime Sunday, before Sunday. I would, I went back periodically to check every few hours, and it still smelled. But I don't believe the DEP ever got anybody there in time to check it.
Okay. Thank you, Robert.
No problem.
I don't want to get too ahead of you, but I'd be interested in hearing more about the options for ordinance amendments. To me, you know, let's say here's something, otherwise it doesn't sound like this, nothing's working properly, and, you know, it's just, it's going to just keep going unless we do something different.
Yeah, there, we have a, we have a very rough draft of an ordinance amendment. And then I believe at the end of the packet, there's also, I believe Brittany added it from Sanford, which is a much more comprehensive odor ordinance that we could take notes from and make our own that way. If we want to continue on, in the packet, I have the full complaint log. And then Matt put this slide in for me. It shows the last 90 days, had 19 complaints, nothing in the last, nothing in, since the new year, but that could be because it's been so frigidly cold. Though I can tell you, I travel by the Maine Organics every day to and from work, and if I put the window down, I can still smell it on the road, even though it's been zero, you know, it's been so cold. So, I, and while I don't consider smell on, on the road itself a violation, as the consent agreement's written, that still tells you that even though it's that cold, it's still creating odor. And then I did have one instance, when I responded to a call from the industrial road, where it did smell that day, but Maine Organics was able to get it taken care of in a matter of an hour or so. But I think it smelled, had smelled for quite a while, but I wasn't there to verify that. But they took care of it once I let them know it was an issue. Back now, to switch gears to our options for what we can do. The first one is let it, let it go like it is now. You know, just try to, try to keep working the way we are, and let the DEP more or less take the reins as for enforcement, because until I can get an imbutinol kit, I have no teeth whatsoever. And then other options, oh, here, here we go. Yeah, let me continue, try to get the imbutinol kit, and then basically have the DEP in charge of enforcement with something go, you know, if they have an actual smell of them, and then.
Can I ask you, excuse me, can I ask you a question on that?
Absolutely.
But DEP will only enforce state laws and rules, not municipal.
Correct. So, we have the consent agreement, which is effectively unenforceable until I can get the imbutinol kit.
Right. You talked about the option of DEP doing enforcement, but they won't.
At the state level, which is smell, the smell would have to get to the level of intense smell for days at a time.
So, that's not, I wanted to just verify. It's not like DEP would step in and enforce our rules.
If it smells, if it smells at nine o'clock after they've done their mixing operation, DEP's not going to come down until it's, if it smells on a Monday, they're not going to come down until it smells on a Wednesday.
I hear you.
Continuously.
Just want to confirm that they don't, they don't enforce municipal, only state, and the state rules don't work for us.
Yeah, the state rules are too broad and not.
I think that the do nothing option is like, that's where we're at now, that they're looking at the leachate. Robert will continue to report on it.
Yeah, I think we can check that one off the list.
Yeah, they, I think as they came here last time, I think there's one instance where they've actually gone to the act, but they're so far away. Bangor is the closest, that, you know, it's not going to be.
If you recall, at the, the last workshop with the DEP, they wanted to deputize my nose and our imbutinol kit for any sort of smell action. But again, they're only concerned if it smells for days. They wanted to make me smell, go there and do the test kit, you know, day after day if it continued to smell. But it, you know, we, what we're looking to do isn't even the same scale. We want no smell after a few hours, or no smell at all ideally, but no smell.
Another question, if we're looking at options, what happens to the, with the consent agreement when we change, if we change the ordinance? Does that negate the consent agreement?
In your packet, there's the copy of the signed, executed consent agreement. It only mentions, there's only one ordinance, it mentioned, it mentions it repeatedly in the consent agreement. It's 803.1B, I think it is.
801.3.
801.3B, which is the, the sentence or two we have about odor.
It says, "No land use or establishment shall permit, shall be permitted to produce an offensive or harmful odors perceptible beyond their property lines, measured either at the ground or habitable elevation." And may I just say, all of this hullabaloo that's been going on for seven years, the solution's right here, folks.
Yeah, but the consent agreement is, changes that, changes that.
Let me finish. The solution has been right here for seven years. And then this council decided to give them a permission slip to avoid the rules that have been here for seven years. And now, that, that passed six to one, and everyone here, with the exception of you and I, signed it. And I think everyone's intent was probably good, but I said that night that if you're going to let someone get away with that, can everybody speed on High Street? The consent agreement was, I don't know where that come out of and why that happened. When you've got this right here, so, and I'll say this again, if, if we can't stand up, last I knew, this was Ellsworth, Maine, okay? Last I knew, the DEP was Maine. This is Ellsworth, Maine. And I have sent the videos to everybody for the two planning boards. I have the minutes right here from 2017, and everyone's turned a blind eye over this problem. I'm not against Maine Organics. I'm for the citizens of the city of Ellsworth and all of the people within a one-mile radius of that. Maine Organics just simply has to keep their odor on their own property. And there's all of this hullabaloo's been going on all this time. It's foolishness. Either get rid of the whole thing and let everyone break every rule going, and stop enforcing every rule, or we need to do what this says. Why is this written?
Well, I'm trying to, just if we could bring this back here, we've got some forward-looking options to modify this, as, you know, previously noted, once the consent agreement.
Excuse me, but this is a workshop for discussion, okay? And you can bring it back all you want, but this was in existence back when it happened, okay? And everyone's run from that. When I got elected to this council, I did a city tour, and I was told by the city manager that the city has broke every rule possible to get them here. Now they're here, and no one wants to enforce the rules. And I don't care about Maine Organic. I'm all for Maine Organic. What I'm here to talk about is the citizenry that is affected by allowing this to happen.
So, looking forward, the consent agreement is now, is now operable, and there is no going back to a pre-consent agreement.
Can you, I didn't hear you.
So, the consent agreement is enforced, there's no going back to a pre-consent agreement without modifying or having the, the person we engaged in the consent agreement with to, to remove it entirely. However, there are additional options, a new smell ordinance, which is fairly robust. But let's, I think we should let Robert finish the options here.
Can I just ask one more clarifying question on that?
Sure.
So, because the consent agreement references one ordinance, if a different ordinance comes in.
Correct.
This would no longer have the impact that it does now.
Correct, and that's what we're talking about tonight.
That's helpful information, thank you.
At the end of the packet, I believe, there, Matt put in a very rough draft of what that would sort of look like.
Right.
Like, if we, if we don't want, if we want to go right to the, the new ordinance options, I can skip the adjustments to the consent agreement section.
Yeah, and just a quick clarifying, Nancy, the no op, the do nothing option is where we're at now. Continuing, Robert will continue to chase the imbutinol piece. He's catalogued ours, he spent seven days, you know, this is, he's been enforcing the law as currently written and is currently within the consent agreement, which we can all agree, there's been as much due diligence as possible, and it's unenforceable, even with the imbutinol and the do nothing option. I think it's my opinion, and Robert and I'd say, Matt, don't want to speak too much for him, but that's not an option that I think is where the council would like to go. There is, we could look to engage in a modification of the consent agreement. The Maine Organics would have to be a part of that modification. I'm doubtful that we could get to a place that would kind of meet the spirit, I think, of what the council is trying to do here. But there's also a third option of a new smell ordinance, which I think Matt and Robert have done, and our attorney have done a lot of investigation. I think it's even better than our, it's much better, not just for Maine Organics, but for the city as a whole in many ways. And it's an option I think we should take pretty seriously, and I'll send it over to Robert to explain.
Not to get ahead, but just these are the questions that are percolating, and I can focus more if I understand what we're doing.
Anytime you have a question, wall me up. I tend to talk and keep going.
I don't do that, no, no.
No, please, anytime you have a question.
And just, I think it's just to note, too, that the, so the consent agreement is dated March of 2024, so it's been 10 months of trying.
Yeah, it was the March, it was the, the meeting before Charlie became.
I was going to say, so it was my fourth, or my fourth.
We had an interim city manager who's out sick today, who, who signed it.
Some of us still show up when we're sick.
Yeah, I, I get him endless grief for what he's done to me, for that signature. But anyway, yeah, on a side note there, I've spent, I did, I did some rough math. I've spent about 40 hours of my employed life at Maine Organics since, since last November, a year ago in November. So, yeah, it's, I spent some time there.
Yeah. We know you've been taking it seriously.
I try, I try. I don't, I don't like to fool around with it. It's, it's serious, a serious matter for the city.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, my hands have been a little tied by the consent agreement, my inability to do anything. Not that there's been a lot of serious instances of violation, there's been, it hasn't been rampant by any means. But when there is serious smell, I don't have the ability to go after any sort of enforcement because of that. So, if you want to go the route of new ordinance, we can amend the land use ordinance and have staff, you know, mostly Matt and myself, draft changes to chapter 56, and provide enforcement options for the city outside of that specific article 801.3B, I believe it is, which the consent agreement does, that's, that's the, our only odor ordinance in the city, and that's the one that's exempted, Maine Organics is exempted from. So.
Is that in this packet?
Yeah.
What page is it?
33.
Thank you.
So, I think on, on page 33, I think that is where the draft of the, the rough draft is something we could bring as a new odor ordinance is available. as a new odor ordinance is available.
So after page thirty-four is the odor ordinance from Sanford.
Sanford, yes.
Yeah, I, um.
Okay, so the draft is on page thirty-four, the back of.
I'm not, I'm, I could, I could grab one.
It's like it repeated itself on thirty-three and thirty-four.
Well, thirty-four says draft on it.
Yes.
So assuming that's current and it's draft. So thirty-three is the current, thirty-four is the draft.
And then third, uh, one oh, it would be eight oh one point seven would be what we would, what we could, what, what Matt's actually proposing as a change to the order.
Eight oh one point three is unchanged in the current and the draft.
Eight oh one point three is, is what's currently, is what we're currently operating under. And then it one point seven will be what the, what the new, uh, verbiage would be.
Thank you.
I have a question about this. And I realize that you inherited this disaster.
I, I was only, I only came in at the very end.
I, I, I realize that.
Well, at the very end of, before the consent agreement, he means.
Yeah, before that foolish, um, writing rules for people to bend. So one oh, eight oh one point three existed back in 2017.
Correct.
Correct? And that was never enforced, okay? So if we was to enact eight oh one point seven, that's not gonna do anything if we don't enforce that either.
It's, it's on, it's on me.
Yeah, and I, I can't, I mean.
You inherited this too.
Yeah, I, we're, we're gonna enforce these pieces. Um, I don't think anybody would ever, um, claim otherwise. I can't, and again, I can't be too backwards looking, but I can say, especially if you, just to kind of cut to the chase in some ways, I think the Sanford ordinance is excellent. Uh, if you look at, uh, one eighty-three dash six in their enforcement area.
Where, where is it?
This is, uh, in the Sanford ordinance, um.
The last, second to last page.
Second to last page, you know, one eighty-three points dash six, I think, you know, if you look at, at least in my review of kind of these pieces, I'd like to go to something similar, um, not exactly to this piece. But, you know, there's, there could, there, we go to more of a, um, you know, this type of standard where, you know, within a certain amount of days, the complaint, the code enforcement, parts investigates, um, you know, they find it to be noxious, uh, and not in compliance, they come back and get issued fines, uh, or violations. Could be verbal at the first one, obviously, we gotta think of this, to your point, Steve, that this isn't just about Maine Organics. This is in general, how to beef up our smell ordinance, so whether it's Maine Organics or whether it's, um, some new business that decides to do something, that if it's similarly noxious and, um, going across properties, that it's a much more robust structure to, um, uh, to have the city have an enforcement capability and, you know, beyond just an in butanol piece, um, but to have the code enforcement look into it. Um, and then, uh, and then to have sort of a committee, I, I believe, um, or a group of people that can really start to, you know, not just code enforcement, but it could be some members of the council, um, or a group of people that can say, yes, this is really a continuing nuisance, they continue to violate. Um, and, you know, there would be a tiering of options, which the final, uh, you know, of violations that could involve fines and fees, but the final piece of which, if it is a continuation of, that it would be a revocation of the business license and a bringing of the city manager, uh, to the city council for a revocation of license if it continues on. I feel like that is the appropriate, you know, you know, even if we, if we were to update our smell ordinance and Maine Organics didn't exist now, I actually think this is an excellent smell ordinance. It's, uh, um, you know, with modifications to be, um, in compliance with, you know, the particulars of Ellsworth and the needs that we have in the city. Um, but to go to something more like this, uh, where we have more of a, uh, you know, a reasonable standard for, you know, we've boss molded it for multiple days, um, you know, we've had complaints from, even from folks in the city council and the community, uh, that you can really say, you know, this is common sense, this is smelling, uh, well beyond the property line and other business owners and other community spaces in ways that are noxious and, um, uh, and, and that need to be addressed. Uh, if the business owner complies and can, um, ensure that that's stopped, fine. If it continues to happen, more, you know, a tiering up of the penalties and consequences with a pretty quick resolution that if it continues to happen, uh, that there's a, a mechanism for the city manager, myself, to come to the city council and revoke the license. So I think that is, now that would be a new smell ordinance, it would not just apply to Maine Organics. So, you know, we'd, um, uh, that would be, uh, that would be the standard that we'd go by. But I, I feel like that's actually for situations like Maine Organics, but if it was to be by any other type of business with a like use, that's the appropriate, a force of mechanism, to your point, Steve, so that, you know, we have a clear path, not just kind of back and forth for multiple years on these types of things, so.
Hey, Charlie, with that door, the noise in the background, it's hard to hear the last couple of things you said. If I, so I apologize for interrupting.
Nope.
I just wanted to add one comment on the, the Sanford ordinance. I like how it goes after the business license, cause that's obviously, and I'm assuming Maine Organics has a business license with the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think in addition to that penalty, you know, that potential, you know, which is obviously the ultimate, you know, losing the business license, but even with that, I think we still also want to have the land, an additional land use enforcement mechanism, you know, through a land use enforcement action, um, that you can file in district court. Um, because ultimately, and especially if we're gonna try to levy fines at any point, it means actually nothing the city can do to collect fines. We can't force them to pay us without taking them to court. So having, I just want to make clear that any kind of fine provisions are really toothless unless we make clear that we could bring kind of two tracks, you can do the business license revocation, but also you can bring a land use enforcement action, um, you know, concurrently or staggered or whatever. We wanted to put it together or we would, um, you know, bring it, go to court and say, hey, they're in violation. Court, make them, uh, be, you know, bring their property into compliance. And oh, by the way, we then get, um, payment of our attorney's fees and there's a minimum $100 a day penalty. And I'm not trying to, I'm not saying all this because I want to, you know, to go and throw the whole book at them necessarily, unless they're not gonna get serious here, but, uh, I think it's, would be in our best interest to keep both tracks open as part of enforcement.
Yeah, absolutely, and there's, the length of time between some of these 45 days, 60 days, I'd probably want to shorten that up a bit as well. And, and excellent point, Patrick, of that kind of express on what the penalties and fines would be. And I, I like that idea too, of having that kind of, it goes to court, just so the, you know, not just Maine Organics, but anybody that was in this position would know, hey, if you continue to, um, have these noxious odors and they're not addressed and permanently addressed, that this, you know, the end, the end piece here is, is pretty difficult, you know, to not be in compliance with our laws. So whether it's this or anything else, I think that's a, um, those are very good edits. So that's about it, right, Robert?
Yeah, I mean, uh, and to, to Steve's point, you know, who, who will enforce this, it'll ultimately be on me. And, and I think I, I've tried to be pretty, pretty fair and honest about the whole thing. And I'd, I'd like to think going forward that, you know, if there's a violation, you know, with, with, with whatever we do with a, an ordinance going forward, uh, I'll enforce it and that hopefully won't be a concern to anybody.
I'd like to.
Oh, go ahead, sorry, Steve.
No, go ahead, Patrick, I'd, I'd like to hear from you.
I was just gonna say, I don't, you know, I don't, I can't speak for the whole council, but I haven't heard anyone saying, let's not do anything. And, um, I think it would be helpful, I suggested next step is to get a draft, an updated ordinance draft together. And then, you know, and, and, you know, we're only a few months away from it warming up, thank goodness. And, um, the smell issue will, you know, rear its ugly head again. So I think this, don't, we want to get this in place before, if we're gonna go down this route, we want to get in place before things warm up. I also think we want to, I don't know if the property, the business owners there are, you know, listening, but, um, you know, that this, we can move on this and they know what we're planning to do. And if they want to try to get their act together more, you know, they have the opportunity to do that the next few months.
Yeah.
Were they notified of this meeting?
Oh, yeah, I, I, I let Josh know in, in an email and writing over a week ago. And he told me this morning he wouldn't be here.
Okay.
I did, I still gave him the Zoom link this, this evening before, so he had a chance.
So Councilor Halloran said this last time, he says, you know, we've been at this and at this and this is their business, why aren't they here?
Correct.
For asking questions, yeah.
I think they've been invited to previous ones as well.
So that's frustrating.
I invited them to the last one as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, and to speak to that a little further, the last time when I brought that up, uh, someone, maybe yourself, I, I'm not sure. I think it was yours, said, well, they're watching from home. And, and I said, well, what kind of a meeting would that be if we all watched from home? Um, big deal. And the only reason they're not here is because, and this is what I said last time, is because they know we're not gonna do anything. If I could go back to this a little bit, um, you know, I, I am disgusted with this seven year process. But I, I, I look at this, um, article, um, that, an article in the paper about the city of Ellsworth gives Maine Organics 90 day deadline to contain its odors, okay? And that come from a, a meeting we had. And there was talk during that meeting in November of 22 about, well, you know, 30 days. And I advocated for 90 because I, I want them to contain their odors. I, I don't care if their property smells. I care about the other people's property that smells from them. If they want to pollute their own property, I'm all for it. I, I, I'm not about, um, causing anybody any harm, but by not doing something, we have caused a lot of citizens a lot of harm, okay? And I've read the minutes of the meeting, this was never the flavor of the approval. I've watched the video, that was never the flavor of the approval. My question is this, I would like to be more, um, of a compliance thought. Fines aren't gonna fix the odor, um, court action probably isn't gonna fix the odor. What are we missing here as a group that can make everybody coexist in Ellsworth, America? And because putting more rules together, that, sure, that, that's a step different than we have today. But those rules were in a play for a long time that were unenforced. And, you know, is, is there something we're missing here? Is there, I, I don't know, I, I, is there, um, we gave them 90 days in 22 and nothing ever changes. Uh, and I hate throwing the book at somebody, but, um, is, is there something that we're missing as a group? That everybody could coexist, uh, in that area happily? That's my question.
I guess that, that would be a question for the owner of Maine Organics and he can't answer it.
And of course, he's not here today.
Yeah, that's what I mean, he's not here today, so.
Sorry, is he on the Zoom by any chance?
I don't believe so. I think Patrick's the only one beside myself.
He's just hanging out there with the chickens, Patrick.
You know, I, I'd say to, you know.
Could we hear from the audience too while we're?
I'm not opposed to that at all.
No, hear from the audience? Sarah?
Anybody want to talk?
I'd like, I'd like to hear from the audience and then come back to this. Maybe that you folks have some.
So for the sake of Ms. White, I'm gonna redo some things that I've already said, so.
Thank you.
Could you identify yourself?
That's what I'm gonna do.
Okay.
So I'm Tim Stone. We are at 30 Old Mill Road in Ellsworth. Uh, we're about a mile away from Maine Organics, a little bit less. We have been trying to deal with this odor for a very long time. One thing that Robert, uh, sent me an email, uh, today, which was helpful, was since the consent agreement has been in place, there have been 41 legitimate odor complaints and 15 of those have come from me. I could easily double that if I wanted to complain about every minor odor that comes on my property that is still very noticeable, but those 15 complaints are times when the odor is, um, horrible. It's really, really bad. Very often it doesn't last very long, and one weekend was an exception. But it's just horrendous when it comes through, sometimes for two hours, sometimes for three hours, sometimes it's intermittent. So that's our situation and that would be a nuisance to me just because I live there, but it's more than that because we're putting in a rather expensive, uh, place to stay for at least, um, 14 and ultimately 16 different groups. And luxury tree houses that are gonna be, I think, really, really nice and add something important to the town of Ellsworth. And odors coming in like that, that are not just something that you're just like, oh, what's that? It's like, ugh, gotta get out of here. Often, um, especially in the summertime, uh, like Patrick said, it's about, it's cold right now, but it's, it's, it's gonna warm up. And right when it warms up, it starts to smell really bad. Usually one Google review, if it's up for a month, is seen 5,000 times on most restaurants and places to stay. So all we need is one Google review to say, I stayed there, I paid this much for it and I didn't expect it to smell like a sewer. And that's gonna get seen in one month, 5,000 times. So we just can't do that as a business. I mean, we're putting a lot of money into this. Those kinds of things would hurt us very, very badly. We think we're doing something positive for the community, um, we're not hurting Maine Organics in any way, um, that I know of. So those are some of the things, I should say a couple of other things. So again, like the distance between Maine Organics and us, just to give perspective, is the distance between right here and Hanford. We're not right next door, so that's a little less than a mile. Um, it's quite a waste. The DEP came by after they had the last workshop with the DEP, uh, for the second time that they've come to my property, in response to at least 40 odor complaints over the last couple of years. And finally, the head of composting came and he said this to me. He said, there shouldn't be odors on your property because of the distance between Maine Organics and where you were at. If they are following the things that they're supposed to be following. So he told me there shouldn't be odors, shouldn't happen, shouldn't travel that far, shouldn't be the case.
That was the state?
That was the head of composting at DEP. Yep. That is not the person who was in charge of this particular, uh, Maine Organics and overseeing them. The other thing that they told me, and apparently they didn't tell this to Robert, is they said they are significantly over the quota that they are allowed a material to take on a yearly basis. Yeah, go for it.
I figured that out on my own and I asked, I asked the state about that and they said, yeah, it seems like they have a lot on the site, but, uh, not according to their logs and we go by their logs. And again, I got another verbal shrug, so that was another, I didn't want to bring that one up, but since Tim brought it up, I'll bring it up.
Thank you.
I mean, that's not what they told me, they said they are over, they're over, they're over the limit. And not just a little bit over the limit, but significantly over the limit. But since that day when they came by, they haven't been back to my property. I want to go back and really hope that everybody will do what Stephen's done and go back and watch or read the planning board minutes. I mean, it's just incredible.
Particularly when the topic of odor comes up. You watch people shift in their seat and you watch robots talk. Hey, the instincts, they don't know what they're doing.
I mean, I talked about it for an hour and a half in one of the meetings and they stayed on. on odor and birds and mice and, you know, rodents and so forth. Um, so there's, there's that. Please go back and see it if you haven't seen it. Um, it doesn't take too long. You can sort of skip through and find it pretty quickly where they're talking about smell. The other thing I think is really important for this whole discussion, um, is the consent agreement. Um, this hasn't been talked about. I think we're seeing this not going to work. It's not really enforceable as it is currently written. I think some of you hopefully remember the email I sent when I totaled up the amount of time it takes for them to actually be in violation on a weekday and on a weekend. And we're talking four to six hours most of the time. And that is not the actual situation that we're facing. We're facing a situation where the odor will be there for a couple of hours and be horrible, and then it will leave. Um, so whatever new consent, not consent agreement, whatever code is written about this or ordinance is written about it, we are concerned that it actually addresses the problem that we are facing and doesn't create something where it's got to smell for three days or it's got to smell all day consistently. That's not the situation. The situation that we're facing that we do not think is acceptable is a situation in which there's odor for two hours at this point in the day, it's intermittent some other times, and then like four days later, it's bad again. Or it won't be bad for a week or something like that. So we can't have, our concern is going forward, we're going to, they're going to do something wrong and then they're going to get slapped on their ass. And then, well, we waited 10 days and now it's okay. Everything resets. That doesn't work for us. We have to have a place where this is, enough is enough. You can't keep smelling up our property over and over and over again. And again, even though, um, some people are saying it's a minor odor, and I don't think we need an imputant test to figure this out frankly, it is terrible. Um, I won't play some of the recordings from some of the people that I played before working on our property, describing how it just smells like, you know, you're right behind the garbage truck. Um, it's not a good place to even work, let alone have guests come and stay, you know, drink their coffee out on the porch. Um, lastly, um, we, we got to do something about this because of the size of the investment that we're putting in. Uh, we're going to have to protect it one way or another. And I would like the city to protect it. I shouldn't have to step forward this summer when we get several bad feedbacks from guests and escalate things in a different way. We have, we have to protect it. It's a huge investment. It's not a small investment. Um, are there any questions about our situation?
I have, I have a question. Um, as you know, I'm very troubled by this for the citizens in your area. Um, and it's, the businesses are suffering. Um, I got beat up immediately when I got my first term as this council from your neighbors. Um, has there, as, as a group of citizens that maybe you have communicated with, has there ever been any communication? Has there any been uh, any, anything from that property owner and the offender to try and address your concerns directly? Or have you had to do it in this method? Has, has this property owner that's pushing odors over, over the lines, have they ever once come to talk to you and, and, um, tried to be compassionate?
Uh, Josh had come and talked to me for a little bit, um, uh, when we first started doing work there. And when we first started complaining, I just said he wanted to meet, but I have not heard from him again, uh, since that one time. Uh, Connor used to receive my calls, but he doesn't answer anymore. When I say, hey, it's smeller.
Connor's just to me, that's the son of the owner.
Yep. So they have reached out once. Um, but then we've complained a lot since then because the, the problem hasn't gone away.
It's Connor's name on Maine Organics now, whereas it used to be Josh or Tracy, you know, that, that triple lease thing that went on there between WTS and DM and J.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out again.
I'll just introduce myself. I'm Glenn Austin. I'm, uh, guys, uh, what do you call litigating the matter with very little success. I'm owing 16 with the, uh, courts here. This matter's been before the Supreme Court of Maine, strangely. And that's by virtue of the court system here. If you want to go from district court to superior court, you have to go to the Supreme Court to appeal. So I wanted to show you one thing. This is the, uh, this is the pleadings for about nine months in district court. Uh, the Supreme Court stuff's on top here. It's almost 200 pages. I'm owing 16 with the courts on this issue. Uh, the district court judge turned me down 14 times, which is remarkable. Um, the Supreme Court said, no, 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 no. Why don't you just file a new claim in superior court? That's what the Supreme Court said. I was asking them to remove the matter from district court to superior court. And they said, why don't you just file a new claim? So there's no statute of limitation on filing a claim in superior court. If, you know what really troubles me here? Um, you renew business licenses every year, right? For businesses in elsewhere. People come here before the council and say, look how many employees we have and we really love doing business here. Wellmans don't even show up for these meetings. It's, it's disregard for the process, for the procedure. Um, you want to treat them with kid gloves when they don't show up for meetings. It's called no, call no show, right? It's, it's rude on the face of it. So if they're a business, if I were, I don't even think it's smart for them to not come to meetings. You know, if I were them, I'd be in the room shaking the hand of everybody because they're doing business here and they're offending other people. Instead, they blow it off. I'd tell them who you're dealing with here. And I'm not here to throw stones. I'm really not. I don't have an axe to grind. I'm like most people. I don't want to smell it when I'm sitting on my deck. Um, this issue has stunk from the beginning to the end. And it's, the onus is on Maine Organics. The problem really is theirs. They don't do everything they can to mitigate the smell. They keep stuff in trailers over the weekend that comes from, uh, what do you call it? The seafood people or, uh, the others. Um, we'll call it the rodent factory. Um, they don't do everything they could to mitigate the smell. And when they don't show up for meetings, you know what they're about. Uh, it's disregard. I was sitting in my car waiting. I can hear them. BM and J sponsors 100.3, you know, on the radio, but they don't show up for the meetings here. Um, the statute of limitation for filing a claim in superior court, there is none. It can be done anytime. It can be done today, tomorrow, in 20 days. I've gotten most of the Irish out of my pleadings. So superior court is a jury trial. It's a fair judge. Um, I've talked to bailiffs. I've talked to the clerks. This matter really belongs in superior court if it can be worked out. The problem is between the manager and the council. But the onus is on Maine Organics to, I think they could improve their processes. I really do. Just from what I've looked into it. So I've been admiring this since I first smelled it. And, um, I think I represent every citizen here. It's, it's not right. You've had a parade of people come before the council complaining about the smell when this thing's on the docket. To Steve's point, seven years this has been going on. And now they don't even show up for meetings. So what are we doing here? Any questions for me?
Thank you.
I have a comment concerning that. Not, not necessarily, but I, I, I could tell you that a lot of that community in the industrial park has refrained from coming.
They're weary, they're weary of the issue.
They've, they've refrained from coming, um, because it's costs, it's hurt some of their business when they show up and speak about it.
Yeah. They can't hire employees. Yeah. People won't work on the industrial road.
Yeah. It's, it's really troublesome and they've given up and said, Ellsworth doesn't care. They're protecting these people and they're, everyone's wasting my time. And I, I'm troubled by the whole thing.
I like the existing ordinance for smell. It's concise. It's, it's really beautiful language. You don't emit odors beyond your lot lines. If you have to create additional ordinance to, you know, do what you have to do, that's a different matter. But that ordinance is beautiful. The consent agreement that was signed by the manager and adopted by the council is a smelly piece of fish. It is the, it's a, I argue that it's illegal in its very nature. Um, I don't know how you ever got to it. Uh, I have some ideas about that, but, um, we can do better than this. You have my confidence. You really do. But, um, I wouldn't let them laugh at you, you know? I really wouldn't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question about the existing ordinance 801.3. When, when Patrick was saying that we need this clear, concise, um, layout of events and the avenues in which we can take, that was never a part of that odor, original odor ordinance. So therefore, would, did we ever have the ability to find and, and take them to court for violation?
As I understand it, it's basically like, like any enforcement action I have, uh, there has to be several instances of violation before I can, without their, without them complying. The, the whole idea of the, of our ordinances have always been, for code enforcement, has always been, uh, compliance first. That's, I don't really have many, I don't, I have hardly any ability to find at all. So, uh, the only way we could levy a fine is if it got to court and the judge decided to find them for what it, for what was going on. But it would, that would be a long, long process.
Okay. So by writing, by this, updating this ordinance and having the legal terminology in there and the different avenues would essentially streamline that process to court and really give us the teeth that we need to hold this business accountable.
Correct. If, if we went with something like the Sanford model, yeah.
Yeah. And I'd also say any business accountable. I think this is.
Any business.
Yeah. And there's kind of two things. One is, as soon as this consent agreement was brought into, which I do believe was, um, was here for, it was a good faith effort to try to, um, and it didn't work. Um, we've spent seven days of full workdays of Robert and the team's effort, a lot of my personal meetings, a lot of his counsel, three additional workshops, um, to really, you know, we're less than a year into it and we're pivoting. Um, and, you know, regardless of whether it's Maine Organics, so if, because of the consent agreement with specific to Maine Organics, that, um, that ordinance doesn't hold anymore. But even regardless of that, I actually believe this Sanford's ordinance or one like it, um, for a lot of the reasons with some of the additions of Patrick that he's mentioned, um, and this sort of tiering to, you know, a quicker conclusion that, hey, there's a, you know, additional levels. If you're not getting into compliance, the penalties get worse. Um, you know, the options, um, uh, you know, it's, this is, this is the rule on smells. If they're in violation, there's, you know, um, a, a panel that will start tiering and escalating the violations, both with fines, but then also ultimately and potentially pretty quickly if it doesn't get into order to a license revocation, um, and some pretty steep penalties. I think, um, whether it's Maine Organics or whether it's any operator under similar smell type circumstances, that this is a preferable ordinance. And then with the new ordinance that would replace, um, and that would hold whether for Maine Organics or for any other. So this, this wouldn't just be specific to Maine Organics. It would actually, it would hold for any other light industrial, industrial use that is a similar type odor, uh, issue that this would be the new standard, uh, from which it would go by. And, um, whether it's Tim or any other citizen, I, and Patrick, you can correct your wrong. I had to go circle up with Matt and, um, uh, and Robert and our attorney, but it seems like there's, uh, an urgency here. Um, and I think we can probably maybe have for the February meeting, um, you know, get this on the books for, uh, for consideration with our attorney present as well, um, after further review and sort of organize this. It's a long meeting already, but, um, I mean, let me, you know, I was thinking March, but, um, maybe.
Public hearing. You've missed the public hearing window.
We missed the public hearing window.
Is it tomorrow or was it today?
I.
Tomorrow?
Think it's tomorrow.
Oh, if that, if that's the case.
So we could expedite that. I think it's tomorrow. I think Ebony has till tomorrow to give them the pay. Well, do you know? The paper's here.
She says that's a different department.
Okay. Fair enough.
I think so. I think.
I think it's tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, um, let me see if we can, but, um, you know, I don't, I think we should move on there.
Um, is Tim right? Jim, when is your business opening?
It should be opening in June.
In June. Okay. Okay.
Can I?
Yeah.
Comment a little bit? Um, you know, I, I can't address seven years. I can address, I was elected November of 2023. This was March of 2024. I know, as you said, the intent was there. This is an important business because of the service it provides. So the stuff, bedding and shellfish waste is going to go somewhere. It used to go to the state, to the town, um, transfer station. So that was, the intent was the, the, the service they're providing in addition to wanting to support a business that's trying to do good work. That was the intent in March. Again, I think my fourth meeting.
Originally, seven years ago, they took sludge from our wastewater treatment.
Oh, wow.
So that was part of, I may be speaking out of turn, but that was part of the impetus to get them here was to save us a lot of money on.
Right.
They would compost our sludge.
So that was, that was the intention. And then again, over the course of hearing, um, from the complaints regularly and wanting to address like this is a monster, I honestly thought DEP would be the answer. Like they were coming, they were going to explain. Um, I think there's follow-up to be done in different avenues about the fact that DEP is not. Um, I understand they don't enforce municipal, but they have not been, um, when there was the presentation with them, they balance, um, education and enforcement.
Yes.
And it's an, it's, that's a tough act for any agency, but I think a conversation somehow on that, but also setting them aside because they weren't the solution that I had anticipated they were going to be. Um, I like where we're headed now about as soon as we reasonably can and making sure that we're getting the, the language correct, get an ordinance in place so that we're moving forward, making sure that we're, um, catching the problems that we want to catch and not inadvertently get, hitting other things that might, um, be constituted within the odor. Um, couple of questions as we move forward. Just, you know, reading this for the first time tonight, the 801.7, the new language that you're discussing talks about a nuisance management plan. Is that what the Sanford ordinance is a nuisance management plan? It seems to be.
Yeah. Well, uh, and a nuisance management plan also is, it's language that is in, uh, Maine Organics, uh, their license with the state. They have a nuisance management plan there. So it'd be similar, like a similar plan to the DEP on how you do it with just different, different qualifications.
So would, would we have a nuisance management plan for every industry service heavy, the description, industry services, industry heavy and industry light uses?
So when they, I would assume, this is more of a Matt question, but he's, you're not here. I would assume that when we license a business of that type, they would have a nuisance management plan as part of their planning board approval.
Okay. So just, I think clarification about is this a nuisance management plan per business, per sector? Is that what this is, is one question.
I'm not sure. That's something I'm not positive on. That would be more of a Matt.
I'm not expecting answers tonight.
Yes, but we can figure that out for you.
Assuming that we're going to go over these notes. I was surprised looking at Sanford and again, looking at it for the first time. Um, we were talking about enforcement, but then how to determine it. Really surprised this seems to be the other extreme. We're getting away from a test kit and training that apparently you're not allowed to have, um, which is another thing to pick up at another time. Um, but that it's a, it's a panel formed, I, per incident or per industry of the code enforcement department and four residents appointed by the mayor who are not aggrieved by the source. And that they, it's determined following concurrent personal observation of the odor at the property line. That it's five people standing at the property line. at the property line, that it's five people standing at the property line deciding whether or not it stinks. It's a really interesting, I'm not, I, I, to go from one extreme to this one is worth noting.
My, my one, my one concern there is can I get five people there quick enough to deal with main organics odor, to Tim's point, it's there, it's there for an hour maybe-
Yeah.
And then it's gone. I have been, how many times have I been to your property? I've smelled it, I think, twice. And I've been, and you can see on, on the log how many times I've been to his property. Every time, his name's there, I've been to 30 Old Mill. Maybe with-
So it's, it's, so it's like how, how to identify whether or not it's a smell? And again, looking at, we all know that rotting shellfish and bedding is an awful smell, there are other smells in town.
Yeah, I, and I, I'm not the expert on, on how to answer the, the other smells in town and how that would apply to specifically light industrial, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
But I, I think we, that would all be addressed with a new-
And that's, I think, the thing we have to look at. I think of when I used to drive through Lewiston, Nissan Bakery would be baking bread and to me, that's the smell of heaven. But what if five people decided that that was a stink and wanted to shut down the industry? So that's just a piece of-
Correct.
I wonder what we do with this.
You, you, you would have to, it would have to be something that you would consider a nuisance odor.
Right, noxious or something else.
Noxious, yeah. There would have to be some language where I don't know if-
And it's not just, it's not just the panel, it's also our code enforcement.
Yeah, I have to make the determination.
In coordination with the, so it would be both. So if the code enforcement officer said this isn't a nuisance odor, that would also, you know, it's-
There's a lot of, a lot of details to be worked out.
Oh, yes, it's not.
I just, I, I like that we're getting away from a thing that isn't, hasn't been working for, since July, nine months. That needs a little bit of work. And then I agree with what I heard with, with Patrick and with you about tightening the timeframe, 90 days to get your act together isn't, isn't okay, that you're either going to get your act together or you're not. And again, trying to look at this more broadly, we have the immediate problem of main organics, we're, we're here, this is it. But also for others, just looking at 90 days is an awfully long time to dance around. I think to your point too, if they get to restart the button every time, then it'll never get done. So, but there's, this is why there are attorneys, is to be able to work through those kinds of details and make sure that our intention is reflected in the language. So I'm looking forward to moving forward on it and again, want to thank folks for coming out. Again, we do read your emails, it's been processed, how do we manage it? So here we are. So, thank you.
You said that the nuisance management plan happens during the planning board meetings when this, when the business is-
Well, I would assume that's how we would do that. That would be when they were, they have to go through a planning board process to get licensed for something like that.
Yeah, so how do we go back on businesses that are already here?
I would say it's kind of, it could have two mechanisms. One, sure, if it's, you know, a business of that type that might necessitate one of those things in industry and, you know, and the second piece is, you know, if we recognize an odor. And there's, there's, there is things in this about, you're not able to be grandfathered in, in the Sanford clause. So hey, we've recognized an odor, Robert goes out there, hey, we don't, you know, we don't have a nuisance management plan on file for you, that would be kind of the first step in a, hey, this is a verbal warning, you know, we've, you know, and that's in here as well. It's first, it's on Robert, he goes out there. And if it's a business that didn't have one, you know, we, we need to have a, now that we have a record of this, we need to have you put together a nuisance odor management plan and goes forward, that gets put in place, maybe there's a timeframe for that, for those new businesses that, you know, weren't essentially part of the, and then move forward from there. I think that'd be kind of the two, but for new businesses that could be like that, it'd be something for code and before issuing a license that you might have to have a, if there is a large bakery that wanted to move into Ellsworth and had those types of things.
We would be in favor of that.
Yeah.
We have a lot of little bakeries, yeah.
Yeah. But then for those legacy businesses as well, if an odor were to come up, that we'd also be able to trigger a nuisance management plan for them.
That's two points. I pulled up the email from Ebony yesterday, she said, this is a reminder, any items requiring a public hearing notice are due to me by tomorrow, which is today. So technically, it's still today.
Wait, yes, they're, they're due her by today, so she can post them-
Submit it tomorrow.
She can submit them Friday.
Okay, so it's the 20, yesterday she said it was due today, now if you, if that's 8:00 AM tomorrow?
Well, you know, we might be able to get to noon, you know, this is one of the reasons that we ask for it to be by X day is so that we have things in and Ebony has time to process them. You know, there's also the possibility of an emergency meeting if we feel like we really need to, you know, once we have this together and we miss the public hearing deadline, that we can-
We need to get the language right.
Yeah, we can-
Second thing is, when is their business license up for renewal?
I don't believe theirs is, theirs would be covered under my office and we have two different types of business licenses. And this is something-
We have a new topic.
Yes, something that staff has, has been talking about with our fee schedule updates and that business license aspect is part of that, totally different topic, not applicable tonight, but in my, in my office, we handle everything that doesn't have to come before the council and those are a one-time, no, no renewal needed lifetime business license.
So in this ordinance where it says we can rescind it, that can still happen, permanently revoke the business license? It's just that it doesn't come up for renewal?
It doesn't need to renew one, it's, it's good for a lifetime until they move or, or new owners take over and then they need a new license.
So this clause about permanently revoke the business license, is that applicable for a license that is one time? I'm asking like you're an attorney, but I'm just going to toss that out to you.
Yeah, I, I don't see why it wouldn't be. I mean, that we could ask that question of the attorney, but I don't see why-
I should have had Froggy Matt on the air.
Yeah, he, he, he did not sound well.
No, he, he, yeah.
Yeah, and we don't, we're not decide, this is again, the workshop to get all the questions out there so that when we go forward, we've got the pieces we need.
An excellent question and yeah, one we'll confirm that this type of license and others like it, if they were to follow to this, would still be revocable as a final step if there's non-compliance.
And then there's more conversation about updating the fee schedule and licensing.
Oh, yes. But that's a whole different topic for another day.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
This is Patrick, like, you know, licenses, it depends on the language regarding how a license was issued. Typically, those licenses, if there's, there may be kind of the general language that if they're not in compliance with certain, you know, city provisions, you know, the license can be revoked. I don't, I don't know exactly what the language says, but, you know, licenses are different than, they're not a property right, like a permit to do something, so typically licenses can be revoked with the devils and the details.
One last thing, I think I have. You mentioned, and you also confirmed, there's too much material on site there being the cause of some of this odor and the state is only going by the logs, which may or may not be correct. Is there anything that the city can do about that? I don't know.
That would be, that would be something we had to write into an ordinance, but that's, seems awfully close to targeting.
Yeah.
I don't know. Again, that's a lawyer question, not me, but-
Because that's a state law.
I think I talked to Matt a little bit about this, but I think in some ways we can adopt some of the state standards in here with this, which would allow us to basically be an enforcement of what the state is, you know, they're not closest to the proximity of these pieces, so there may be, you know, not just the Stanford, Sanford ordinance in and of itself, but Matt had talked about, you know, we can't adopt some of the state standards so that we can kind of enforce some of those things, it's a little more local. But that's an excellent point, Tabitha, and, and one we'll definitely look into, including to Robert's point, that this is, you know, this is to hold for all businesses that would might be violating a new smell ordinance, not just the main organics. And I, I could see having that capability, which the state has, you know, at large, might be something good to put in this smell ordinance too. Or another nuisance management plan on if you have this type of thing.
Right, right.
A conversation with our legislators about what we're seeing at DEP that's frustrating.
I, just not entirely throw DEP on the bus, I know that they're, they're understaffed and they have a lot of area to cover, so while we think it may be extremely important for Ellsworth, DEP's got a lot of other, you know, irons in the fire.
So if this could, I mean, and this can be not just punitive, but okay, so here's further proof DEP needs more resources, that's good things for legislators to know as well.
That's, I, you know, it's-
It's a good point, I appreciate it.
I, I hear it not just from the, the people that, whenever I deal with the EP on whatever topic it may be, not just the main organics-
Yeah.
People that deal with main organics, they're always, they always say how they're covering a huge area of Maine and they have not enough people to do it. So that's, that's what I hear over and over from them.
I also don't know anybody anywhere who feels like they're fully staffed, no matter what sector they're in, we're all doing three jobs, just-
Yeah, that's, that's a fair point.
It's, yeah.
I'd like to comment on Tabitha's point. It's, it's an excellent point, but if, if the paper doesn't match the material, it's not going to match the material for our eyes or their eyes. So if a log is fudged, a log is fudged, just because our eyes are looking at it doesn't make it any different than the state's eyes, okay? And, and I'm not against what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, just because the city starts to look at that and adopts their idea. If the log is phony, the log is phony. It's, I mean, now you're getting into digging up the truth about the material versus the law.
And that's, that's why I didn't bring it up in the packet, because I can't prove it. But I, I've, I've spent a lot of my life looking at piles of dirt, which are pretty similar to piles of compost, and I can start adding up the yards in my head pretty quickly and I can see that they've got way more than they're supposed to.
So, and, and to continue a little bit here, I, I'm struggling with 801.7. And before I get into that, let me just say this, I sat at a council meeting and an attorney for the city of Ellsworth came forward and told us that this was the best thing to do because you have, you have the party, main organics agreeing to this and you have the city agreeing to this. So if there's violations in that agreement, it's very clear and concise when it gets to court. Now I'm hearing there's violations to that agreement and that doesn't matter.
All, all because this magical test kit can't be, can't be acquired.
Yeah, and I'd say there's more than the imbutant, I mean, I think-
Yes, there are other issues.
But my point is this, is that, is that it was sold to the city as this was a way to streamline the process and obviously that's not true.
Correct.
Because, or maybe it is true and we're just not having the backbone to push it to be true. I don't know the truth. But beyond that, 801.7 looks like a bunch of cloudy murky stuff compared to 801.3, which is nice and clear and simple. Can't put the odor beyond your property lines.
Okay.
801.7 doesn't say that. It's got a bunch of malarkey in it. And I'm not saying that it's malarkey that's intended, but it isn't as clear as what we have today. So I'm not sure why we're pushing to go forward with a new murkier, a new mercury, murkier ordinance than we have and wasn't in Boston.
I, when I spoke to Matt about that this morning, he wanted me to stress that that's a very rough draft, it's just an idea of what we could do, that, that wording is, has no bearing on what we do going forward, we can totally change that. That's just an idea.
But I'm hearing that 801.3, that's clear, concise and nobody wanted to enforce it, nobody wanted, I'd rather that they lived up to it.
Me too.
I don't like this enforcement idea. I like, I'd like to see that main organics become a good neighbor and try and be respective of other people's property. That, that's my goal, but obviously that isn't working. We've tried every trick in the book and, and they don't even come to the meeting. So, but I, I'm struggling with this 801.7 because 801.3B is as clear and concise as it possibly could be. And I, I'm troubled that if the consent agreement isn't working and this, this process that we were told would be nice and clean if we have to go to court, that was my understanding when this come before the council. And as you know, I was not in favor of writing permission slips for offenders, that's just hurting the neighborhood. And that's essentially what happened. What is there in the box of tools that allows us to go back to 801.3B? Do we know that?
Main organics would have to agree to end the consent agreement. We need both parties, both the city and main organics to agree to end that, to go back to one-
The consent agreement clearly says that this is null and void to them?
Correct.
That's what a consent agreement, they, they're no longer, that's not the operable statute for that organization.
Can I ask a clarifying question related to Steve's point? I was seeing this as the draft, meaning we're not replacing 801.3 with 801.7, but that 801.7 is in addition to.
That's how I was under-
So what they're not, we're not losing 801.3, the language you like, we're adding more that gets, I think, deeper in and would also be relevant.
Is that the intent?
Yeah, and it also triggers something for the planning board if need be.
Yeah, and triggers, you know, a whole, 801.3 for its simplicity also doesn't have a lot of the things Patrick was just talking about of, you know, fines, metrics, tiering so that people know what the, what the toolkit for the city is in smell pieces like this.
Maybe I'm missing something in this consent agreement, but I don't see that the consent agreement voids this for main organic.
I, I-
It's a variance, sure it does.
Yeah, I, I think I did, many months ago, I, I recall that I, in an email to you, you asked a very similar question and I, I tried to point out in this where it, it references the odor ordinance. It's the only ordinance that it references, so that's why it, it supersedes the odor ordinance in this specific instance of main organics.
I think this is here.
And that, I'm sorry?
I think I found it there, where it says awareness.
How about section 12 in there that says you have, you know, remedies?
Yes, it's, he's correct, it's section 12. Nothing herein show be construed to limit the city's authority to enforce any other land use permitting requirements related to main organics use and occupa, occupancy of the property. That's, that infers that the only thing that this does stop them from being subject to is 801.3B.
I guess I'd like to just get a legal opinion on that.
Okay.
Sure, when, for the, what I'm hearing from council too is we're going to have for our next, whether it's the February meeting, if we can get it in time for that, or whether it's an emergency meeting shortly thereafter, we're going to get an update, something more, a little bit more in line with the Sanford, with Patrick, Tabitha and Nancy's, excellent, added some clarifications, but obviously we'll have our attorney on board too to go into more detail of some of the things we've talked about tonight on why the, you know, the, what the consent agreement is in reference to is no longer applicable as it goes to main organics and the new smell ordinance that we go to, kind of what that implies, not just for main organics, but for all light industrial uses in, in the city of Ellsworth. So, yeah, I think, if correctly from, I believe that's kind of the will of the-
That feels good, that's the right thing to do.
I just want to see that timeline really shortened on the, like the Sanford-
Timeline shortened, a little bit of more elucidation on that panel aspect and, you know, the amount of people, do we have to do five, could it be two, does it have to be general residents, could we have a multitude of staff from different departments?
That's true.
As Robert was saying, and his original idea with some of the smell ordinance, some member from highway, a member from a couple of different areas to come, it seems to me going to more of a reasonable standard in a shorter timeframe and, you know, and a much more significant escalation of both fines, potential court fee recoups and at the end, a revocation of the business license as well.
Again, I'd like to get a legal opinion because it, it clearly says in this document, which is the administrative consent agreement, that main organics admits to the presence of odor and it goes on to talk about 801.3B. And then the next paragraph, it says, they admitted to violating that ordinance. And the next paragraph under two, it says, main organics agrees- And the next paragraph under two, it says, Maine Organics agrees to institute immediate changes to its operational procedures to ensure the operations does not produce offensive or harmful owners, odors perceptible beyond their lot lines, measured at either the ground or the habitable evaluation. Elevation, excuse me. So it references it, but it doesn't say that, they've admitted to it. And then it goes on to say that they will comply with it. So again, I'd like to get a little clarification on that.
That goes, that goes back to.
Doing it, and then it agrees to comply with.
That goes, it goes to section seven. How, how, how I confirm that they have not complied is that imbutinol test kit that. Nobody can get me.
You can get it on Amazon.
I, I was going to say, I could have brain surgery tomorrow morning.
But to make it stand up in court, I have to be certified on how to use it, and that's the.
We talked earlier about that, yeah, that's one of the.
We're just going around. I'm just disgusted with the whole situation here. And I believe 801.7 is written in favor of the violator, again. And 801.3B is clear and concise.
Your elected officials do have all the authority you need in this room.
Great, well, we'll start off as a team. I'll check in with, with Ebony tomorrow to see if we can get that added to the, it's, it's a big one. It's going to be a long meeting.
That's what I'm wondering. Would it be better to schedule it another, like, week after, even the same week?
Yeah, maybe it's just.
In order to, to have time just to focus on this issue.
Yeah.
Because you can see it's, what happens is we get talking about other things and then at the end, if this is stuck on the end, then everyone's wanting to just get home. I would prefer to have it its own special meeting. So, that's just me personally.
I second and third that idea.
They're going on for seven years. You've got time.
I want to get it before June.
Springtime is somewhere.
A special meeting is the best idea.
I'll pencil in a special meeting the week thereafter, which gives us another week to get the, in the books. Obviously, but I'll, I'll line on schedules because, yeah, it's already going to be a long meeting. We have some roads, RFPs to go through for the previously, roughly $2 million in road funding that we're doing. We have a Bray Avenue discussion, which also I think could be pretty in-depth. And it's, it's going to be a packed agenda, so. Let's give this one the space and time it deserves. But still happening relatively quickly, so.
Could we get some assurance that Maine Organics receives communication about our plans?
Oh, yeah.
Because, you know, it's not fair to sit here and have a discussion and just assume they know.
I, I, I can, I'll, I'll email them the link to this meeting tomorrow.
Well, my, my point is, let's, let's, maybe Charlie could send out a, an email stating what we're planning to do. Just to be fair, I mean, it's, it's hard to throw stones at somebody with their eyes closed.
Well, they're right. They didn't show up to meetings. They didn't show up to the last meeting either.
Yeah, we'll, as soon as the meeting's arranged, we'll notify them of the meeting and send links to previous discussions and that the discussion is going to be on, you know, a new, a new smell ordinance similar to one that we have with the Stanford piece. You know, I might not have all those details at that time, but it's going to be a discussion, a potential action, a special meeting. And I would hope that there'll be a vote attached. But Robert has been informing, you know, really a lot of parties. We've seen Tim here many times as well, DEP.
And are these materials put up on the city website?
I don't believe so right now, but we can, I know we discussed previously that it, this is kind of a, you know, with the courthouse piece, we did a lot of like kind of public materials on the website, also with some of the THM issues with the water. We've been doing kind of just special websites for this. So happy to start putting some pieces up for materials for this on the web and maybe create a, you know, just so people have access to some of these, these documents. With the consent agreement, you know, maybe some of the complaint logs, yeah, other pieces, happy to put that up.
Cool.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.